College meeting of the Amador County Board of Supervisors to order on this Tuesday, November 8th, Election Day. And we are up in Room C at the county building because elections is occupying the board chambers, rightly so. So we'll just make it work. So at this time, if you could all stand and join me in the pledge. We're facing the flag outside today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The board has met in closed session, covered one item. Item two, conference with labor negotiators and gave direction to staff. We'll go to public matters, not on the agenda. Discussion items, only no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time on any subject in the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Is there any public comments at this time? Mr. Hopkins?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I guess sitting here is fine. Okay. I'd like to introduce our new county librarian to the board today. She's got quite a bit of experience, and I hope I don't mess this up, but she's got her master's in library science. She's got her bachelor's in philosophy. She's got some unique background where she's also got some education in funeral services, autopsy services. We sold her from San Diego while she was down there. She's a fitness instructor. She's also part of the California National Guard and breakout. So without going any further, I'd like to introduce Catherine Olson as our new county librarian. Please do it.
Welcome. Would you like to say a few words?
I just wanted to correct. I'm actually a member of the State Guard, not the National Guard. So I support the National Guard.
Well, that's different then.
How do you spell Catherine? With a K or a C?
It's a K. It's K-A-T-H-R-Y-M. And I'm happy to be here. How do you feel to be here?
You don't have any philosophical themes to say?
I don't know. I'm just there.
Smart girl, no.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
All right. Hope you stay with us for a long time, though. Just had a new addition to the library, so hopefully it makes people feel a lot more comfortable.
I spent a lot of time in libraries as a kid.
Yep, that's right.
They got the pavement done. Did you see that?
Yeah. The pavement done, it looks good out there, so yeah, pretty happy with all that.
Catherine just started yesterday, so she's still figuring it all out.
What are you gonna do to improve the island library?
I don't know yet.
Okay, that's a good answer. At least you didn't try to walk your way through it. Unlike supervisor Meto, I spent a lot of time reading books and library, and it was fun, so we want to encourage that.
Good. Good to hear.
Thank you. Any other public comments? From anyone in the audience here? Amy? No? All right, anyone on Zoom?
None at this time.
No, Lois is not here? With that, then, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Moved to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Most carries four zero one. Let the record show also that Supervisor Axe is absent from today's meeting. He notified me that because of the bad connectivity with the weather, he would not be able to zoom in today while he's on vacation. So let's just say he's on vacation. All right, approval of items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Most carries four zero one. And on our regular agenda, we will take a hard break at 10:15 at the request of a board member. So with item five A, update by the Amador County Health Officer, Dr. Rita Kerr.
Good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Morning, Dr. Kerr. Let's wait till we get your full screen. All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
You ready? Okay, good morning. Chairman Forrester, Supervisor of the community of Amador, speaking the monthly COVID-19 situation update. High and early uptake of other seasonal virus respiratory infection, including influenza and RSV, which is otherwise known as respiratory syncytial virus. Multiple elementary schools in Amador County had over 10% of student capacity each day over the past week. Nationally and statewide, pediatric hospital capacity is strained. Public health is both monitoring this situation and collaborating to manage the pediatric surge in Northern California and the greater Sacramento Sierra region. Currently, locally, the COVID hospital impact is two COVID positive patients hospitalized at Sutter Amador, and to date, that's 411, which is an increase of four since last month. Amador County residents who are known to have been hospitalized because of COVID-19. Moving on to the graphics that we show, I don't know if the board can go ahead and put up the EPI curve. As usual, that shows laboratory confirmed cases in blue, and the probable cases on the top of the blue bars are in green. And it's been low, but we're starting to trend upwards. And not yet reflected on this graph because of a data lag is a new COVID outbreak that began in a senior care facility late last week. Currently, there are 41 known active Amador County resident cases of COVID, new in the past 10 days, which is up from 15 a week ago. Case counts do not include at-home COVID self-tests, which are not consistently reported to public health. Mule Creek State Prison currently has only two active inmates COVID cases, which is the lowest I've seen that in a long time. Instead of the usual pie chart of the COVID case distribution, this month, I'd like to take a look at the flu activity map. Bring that one up. And what you'll see, this is the map of the U.S. It's very common for influenza to start in the southeast corner of the country and move its way over, but we are definitely at higher levels than usual for this time of year, seeing peaks that usually occur in late December, January, and February, occurring October into early November. Next, we'll take a look at some graphs reflecting RSV activity. The first one is a line graph of several years running, several seasons dating back to 2017. And you can see that RSV activity usually peaks in the mid-winter to early spring months. But the yellow line at the far side of the graph is the end of the 21-22 season, and these seasons are October through September. They're not the calendar year. So you can see that in October, that yellow line at the far left was higher than... And this is actually the Kaiser-Pfund Nancy system in Northern California active sentinel data collection for this state. In the next graph also shows RSV. This one is hospitalizations in particular because of RSV. And again, you can see, we started the end of last season much higher than normal. Actually, the last two seasons have been higher-than-normal RSV activities, and the beginning of this season is even above that. The vast majority of these hospitalizations are very young children, usually under age five. And then the other age group that's most susceptible to RSV is the older population, over age 65 and particularly over age 70. Moving on to, back into the COVID research. Since last month, one additional COVID-19 confirmed death occurred in an Amador resident, a man in his 70s, and another case, a man in his 80s, is still under investigation, waiting on the final death certificate to determine if his COVID infection caused or contributed to his death. The total confirmed Amador County resident COVID deaths to date is 85, and nine in Mule Creek State Prison inmates. Probable COVID deaths are those that have had a positive supervised antigen test but not a laboratory molecular confirmatory CPR test, and three Amador residents have been determined to meet the criteria for probable... The updated vaccines are now available to people over 30 and older. The updated boosters have been reformulated to better match the current circulating strains of the novel coronavirus. Timing for the bivalent booster is at least two months after your most recent dose of COVID vaccine, or if you've recently been infected, it could bite the way, at least three months. A COVID vaccine's primary series must be completed before getting the bivalent booster dose, but you are able to continue to mix and match and choose a different vaccine for booster than you got for your primary series. When you come in for a booster dose, please bring your vaccination card, or a photo of it on the phone, or a digital vaccine verification to show the dates and types of previous doses you received. COVID vaccine clinics for everyone aged 5 and older continue to be held at Health and Human Services Back Entrance in Suite 500 on Tuesdays from 8:30 to 11:30 in the morning, and Thursday afternoons from 1:00 to 4:00. Primary series and booster doses are available. Public Health currently has Pfizer, Moderna, and Novavax COVID vaccines available. You may visit myturn.ca.gov or call 833-422-4255 to schedule an appointment. Those who have appointments are prioritized. Walk-ins are accepted at the clinic, but must arrive a half hour before the clinic's end time. Now is the time to get your seasonal flu vaccine updated before holiday gatherings and travel. Public Health is offering flu shots, giving us the same visit during the Health and Human Services Tuesday, Thursday, COVID vaccine clinics. Unfortunately, we don't have any high-dose flu vaccine, which is the one recommended for those aged 65 and older at the Public Health Clinic. Those folks may check with their doctor or at vaccines.gov for retail pharmacy availability of flu, and pharmacies also still have COVID vaccines as well. Parents who are interested in having their young children aged six months and four years old get vaccinated should talk with their doctor, or may call Public Health at 209-223-6407 to schedule an appointment. A parent or legal guardian must be present at the vaccine appointment. COVID vaccines and boosters remain free of charge for everyone at this time, and remember that boosters are important to maintain protection against severe COVID-19. The COVID-19 mobile vaccination team continues to provide vaccinations for homebound individuals who may schedule a near-home visit by calling Public Health at 209-638-6407. COVID vaccine, more than immune, and multiple... EpiShell is available locally at the Sutter Amador Innovation Center and needs a physician referral for that. Moving on to COVID testing and treatment, I would like to remind everyone that Medicare and Medi-Cal allow pickup of free test kits at pharmacies, just show your card, and private health insurance must pay for or reimburse for eight COVID-at-home test kits a month. Antigen self-test kits are available also for distribution at Public Health and some local agency partners. If you test positive, please follow self-isolation guidelines, inform your close contacts, and quickly seek medical advice to find out if antiviral treatment is recommended for you. Talk to your doctor, call the California COVID-19 hotline at 833-422-4255, or go to covid19.ca.gov/treatment to find free treatment options. Seek treatment while symptoms are still mild. Do not wait for the illness to get worse. The OptumServe testing and treatment site... OptumServe will be closed this Friday, November 11, in honor of Effemens Day, and will resume usual operations next Monday. Register for a supervised antigen test with OptumServe at LHI.Pare or by calling, excuse me, 888-634-1123. PCR swab collections that get sent off to the labs for testing are still available upon request at the OptumServe website. Bring a complete list of all medications and supplements you're taking, along with you to your appointment, to screen for potential drug-drug interactions with immune treatment. It is important to remember that viruses are part of the natural world. This uptick in respiratory infection is really not something you can control, but it is something you can prepare for and plan around. Be aware of symptoms, stay home when you're sick, and make sure you are taking advantage of the powerful vaccine tests, medications, and other resources that are available. With few community-wide safety measures now in place, more people may be vulnerable this fall and winter. Getting vaccinated for flu and boosted for COVID-19 is likely to help keep many of us out of the hospital. Protect yourself. [Music] [Inaudible] Putting in and out a little bit what I heard, and then please correct me if you're, if I heard something different. You were asking about seasonal flu?
Yeah, part of, like, the death rate from seasonal flu, has that, is it part of that showing now of COVID numbers, or how's that working?
Oh, that's a good question. So respiratory conditions alone, like emphysema, asthma, death porcupine, did see a drop-off as a solo diagnosis for death rates during the COVID time, because some of those folks likely died of their, because COVID is what triggers the exacerbation of their underlying respiratory condition. So, you know, both of those would appear on the death certificate. And so, both and/or... We definitely have the significant risk of seeing elevated influenza death rate this season as well. I also want to mention that people can get infected with more than one virus at a time, so they could be infected with both influenza and RSV, or both influenza and COVID. And in those instances, they tend to have a more severe course of illness. So again, seek treatment early, and it is actually possible for the high-risk folks to be treated... [Music] Is that... [Inaudible] treatment? Like, we can... That's not a serial infection.
All right, Dr. Kerr, I hear you're getting off easy today. Thank you for keeping up the rest of what's going on with the health care situation.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
You too. Everybody vote.
All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item, five B, update on tree mortality mitigation activities. This is from Tad Mason, primary and TFS consultants, with Dr. Richard Harris and Ed Stuvenager.
Good morning, Chairman Forrester and board members.
Good. We have a short quarterly report posted this morning, as in the past, Dr. Harris' generic presentation. Chuck, will you be putting it on the screen, or should we manage it?
We'll get it on the screen.
Okay. You have it up there?
It is good. Hopefully Richard is... [Inaudible] Look.
Hold your hand.
And Dr. Harris? Have it up on the screen.
I've got the presentation here. I think we've done twenty... [Inaudible] It completed at a cost of over $40 million, and Cal OES and Cal Fire reimbursed the county a total of about $3.7 million. We're currently conducting surveys for new and existing mortality throughout the county. So Ed and I have been doing that over the last couple of weeks. When we completed those surveys, we've developed three to four new projects on private land for the coming year. Next slide. So all the pines have been resurveys, including the side roads between Pioneer and Pine Grove, called Highway 88. You know, the drive-by survey has picked up... [Inaudible] The project boundaries are generally going to follow the boundaries of our last project east of 49, and that is shown on the next map. Next slide. So these were the projects that we did last year, and the boundaries of these projects are going to basically correspond to the boundaries of the next three projects east of 49. And we'll probably take a look west of 49 again, and see if another... [Inaudible] We're seeing a lot of pine trees that are exhibiting significant beetle thriving, and we don't know if these trees are dying. We're going to keep seeing, keep looking and see whether the trees that we are observing are sliding and actually end up dying. We're also seeing lots of pines that have been killed by beetles with no house or sign of attack. [Music] We don't see that so much. Sometimes we'll see a few little bits, too, but mostly what we see is... [Music] Next slide. Okay, so the good news, and I think the board probably is fully aware of this already, but the Good Neighbor Authority funding the possibility that we're going to get funds from the Forest Service to offset the cost for harvesting dead trees on Forest Service land. It looks like the money's there. The agreement is, has been submitted to the Forest Service, in the process of approval. That takes a little bit of time. Under the terms of this agreement, the county will be compensated for the 25% of the costs that are not offset by Cal OES. The money is actually there. The total available funding is $225,000 for tree mortality work. Well, all of a sudden, we got blank. Did I lose you, or what?
Richard, you're still on.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything on the, I didn't see the next slide. But, yeah, it's okay. Just to make a long story short, and Tad might want to elaborate on this, the projects on Forest Service land, there will be a Bear River and Silver Lake to happen in the past. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
And the slides aren't changing, Richard. That might be a problem on your end.
Yeah, it looks like it. I just have a blank screen. But it's okay, I'm well done, unless there's some questions, and Tad wants to elaborate on the Good Neighbor Authority.
Well, as far as the GNA agreement, it's been a long road, months in the making, and I want to thank the CAO, Chuck, for his patience, and County Council, but it looks like there is light at the end of the tunnel, and the grants and agreement staff at Regional Fire Headquarters will have the documents likely this week, and hopefully can sign off on them and we can implement. So we know that there's quite a bit of tree mortality up there at Bear River and Silver Lake, but with the latest set of storms, we're pretty well weathered out, and won't be starting those projects at any rate until spring. So with that, we're open to questions from the board.
What type of questions?
Just a statement. I will say, I was at Silver Lake a while back, and there is an incredible amount of trees dying at Silver Lake. I mean, it's going to be really ugly come springtime.
Thank you, Supervisor Onetto. I'm going to defer to Eddie. Eddie, your thoughts on Silver Lake?
That's exactly right, Tad, and Supervisor Onetto, that's exactly correct. The mortality started late spring, and it basically proceeded all the way through summer, and it never stopped. It basically kept on going. You know, and it's sort of funny, because, you know, we did have mortality at Bear River, but nowhere near the amount that we had at Silver Lake. And I got a number of calls from people who have cabins up there, and, you know, asking if we're doing the wrong work up there, which of course was contingent to... And he grants an agreement staff at Regional Fire Headquarters. Will have the documents likely this week, and hopefully can sign off on them and we can implement. So we know that there's quite a bit of tree mortality up Bear River and Silver Lake, but with the latest set of storms, we're pretty well weathered out, and we'll be starting those projects at any rate until spring. So with that, we're open to questions from the board.
Just a statement. I will say I was at Silver Lake a while, a while back, and there is an incredible amount of trees dying at Silver Lake. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be really ugly come springtime.
Thank you, Supervisor Oneto. I'm going to defer to Eddie. Eddie, your thoughts on Silver Lake?
No, that's exactly right, Tad. And Supervisor Oneto, that's, that's exactly correct. The, the mortality started late spring, and it basically proceeded all the way through summer. And it never stopped. It basically kept on going. You know, and it's sort of funny because, you know, we didn't, we didn't have mortality at Bear River, but nowhere near the amount that we had at Silver Lake. And I got a number of calls from, from people who have cabins up there and, and, you know, asking if we're doing it around of work up there, which of course was contingent upon the G and A agreement. But no, the mortality up there has just gone unabated through the entire summer months.
Yeah, pretty sad to see, and it's, you get up high enough, a lot of trees are dying all the way through there. Any public comment here?
We do have a comment via Zoom.
I was taking the audience here first. There's no public comment, so now we'll go to Zoom.
Holler, if you could please introduce yourself. For Jeff's iPhone.
Yes, hi. This question is for Ed and Richard.
Can you identify, can you identify ourselves, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry. This is Jeff White, a local resident in the county. When residents notice a cluster of trees that are dying top-down rapidly, and it's a large cluster together, who should they contact, or is there an online form to fill out, especially if it's outside of your survey area?
Well, nothing is outside our survey area. I mean, the, the issue, you know, is often brought up when people find trees dying on their property as to, you know, how can they actually get into the program? And the way this, this works is that Ed and I go out and we identify properties with dead trees. We then send out a right-of-entry form to the property owner to allow us access to the property to confirm the presence of the trees, and then ultimately to take the trees. So if you've got dead trees on your property that are clearly dead or clearly dying, as judged by a forest or, judged by us, really, and the tree is close enough to a county road to hit it, then you'll, you'll be sent a right-of-entry form, and you'll be entered into the program.
And that's to clarify that. It has to be threatening a county facility. It's not just any tree. It's going to be threatening a road that we.
A road or county infrastructure.
Or a public apartment or county building.
So when a cluster of trees is noticed, Jeff White again, sorry. When a trust, a cluster of trees is noticed, if it's not on your list, because, you know, of course, the county has a lot of square mileage to cover, who should they contact to make notice of that and then give you guys the opportunity to inspect that?
As I said, you know, we survey every road, except private roads in the county. So if you're on a, if you're on a county road, then we will look at your property.
Yeah, but what's the contact information?
Well, you can contact me if you have trees that, that you think qualify for the program. My email address is, if you'd like to jot it down. Are you ready for that, Jeff?
Yes, thank you.
R R Harris Consulting, all one word, at gmail dot com. Or you could call me at seven oh seven, six eight five, five five oh eight.
Yeah, and I think the, the best advice for people to call the, the board office and our staff can give people that information.
And that's, that's often the case, is that I get referrals from the board staff as well.
Any other comments on Zoom? Any other board comments?
Mr. Hopkins. Tad, you had contacted me here last week or a week and a half ago about prevailing wage. Any new development with that and any information you can share with the board, how that might affect this funding in the future?
Thank you, John. There is a discussion underway with Cal O E S regarding concerns that prevailing wages may now become a requirement for contracting services in support of tree mortality, tree mortality mitigation. Have not received final word back from Cal O E S on that. They are likely having to refer this to Department of Industrial Relations. And this may take a few weeks. At any rate, prevailing wages issue has come up before in the past, and Cal O E S and D I R have ruled unequivocally that prevailing wages do not apply. However, there's apparently been some recent litigation that may change that dynamic. If, if that's the case, it would be unfortunate. Obviously, it would increase the cost of tree removal significantly if we go into prevailing wage.
The only reason I mention that is that it, it increases, just so the board knows, inherently throughout history, it usually is anywhere from thirty to thirty-five percent more cost. So that reduces that funding opportunity. In addition to that, it's far more complicated and really eliminates a lot of local bidders sometimes due to the requirements, if, if the state chooses to do that. So I thought it was something you guys should know about.
Well, I think we need our representative on the tree mortality, tree mortality board to bring that up and advocate for the governor to win an executive order, because there's still an emergency. Supervisor Oneto said the amount of trees that are dying have increased, not decreased. So, Ms. Lomenco.
Jane Lomenco, District Five. I think an assembly bill relative to prevailing wage for work relative to, like, fuel reduction and fire projects just failed. So you would think that this would fall, the same thinking would follow this type of work as well. Assembly Bill eleven.
Unfortunately, the unions carry a lot of weight in Sacramento, so that needs to be revisited by our committee and see if we can advocate for the governor to take action on this again.
I think the bill had passed the legislature but was vetoed by the governor. But no, Richard's right. The unions do carry a lot of weight in Sacramento, and they want it. Not seeing it's right.
Yeah, we have to tell the governor. Twenty twenty-four is right around the corner. All right, any other Zoom comments?
Yes, Chairman Forrester, this is Tad again. On the prevailing wage question, would it make sense, I know Amador County is a member of R C R C. Could R C R C turn the water on this prevailing wage issue as well?
They, they already have, and they probably will continue to. It's been an issue, R C R C, that they, they've opposed it. So I think they will continue to.
We need to get both our state agencies, R T R C and C S A C. C S A C was involved. R C R C had a staff member attending committee meetings when this all started. Problem is, our C S A C staff say that it's very hard to get through to the governor's staff sometimes. They're a different kind of staff than Sacramento has seen before. I don't know if you understand that comment, but.
You're being very kind.
Well, they're very progressive, and they don't really understand the issues very well. Under Governor Brown, his staff seized this issue and at least understood how important it was when it all started. Okay, Tad, Dr. Harris, and Ed, thank you very much for being with us today and for the report. We look forward to, I have to say, unfortunately, continuing on this issue.
Through calendar year twenty twenty-three now, and we want to thank you for that vote of confidence signing us on for one more year of services.
You know, I guess one question I'd have. If they end up having to pay prevailing wage without also going to our contract with T S S?
Yeah. I mean, we would, we'd have to update it, I think, but all reimbursement. Would T S S have to pay prevailing wage?
No. That's a good question.
No, no, that's, they're professional services. It's only going to apply to the construction portion.
Not their work.
It's not their work. Had to get my head running for a second.
Okay.
June.
You're welcome. Thank you. We'll go on to our next agenda item. Item five C, Planning Department, consideration of the Land Use Committee's recommendation to adopt a resolution of intention to amend the county's bed and breakfast end code to allow detached room units as alternative guest quarters for overnight lodging. And Mr. Beatty.
Hey, good morning. Detective Department. And in one of your September meetings, Mr. Ponele Gue made a presentation and proposal to amend our bed and breakfast code to allow detached room units, for lack of a better, better description, to be used in a manner similar to traditional bed and breakfasts. The parcel would be able to have one, but not, but not both, bed and breakfast and detached rooms. It seemed like the board was generally unfavorable of the, favorable of the idea, and you sent it back to the Land Use Commission, your Land Use Committee, to refine it and come up with some parameters. And the Land Use Committee ultimately recommended that you adopt a resolution of intent to amend the code to allow detached room units with the following limitations. Detached room units would require a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. Location, because you wanted to limit the scope of these, with the locations would have to include an existing licensed and bonded winery. Parcel size would be a minimum of twenty acres. Minimum property line setback would be a hundred feet, and there'd be a maximum of five rentable detached room units plus a caretaker unit. I don't want any get personal. Suggested actions to adopt a resolution.
Okay, more discussion? Any comments?
Sure. I've got some. You know, one thing I wonder about, too, is like, are your septic systems going to be like each individual unit or a group system, or you got that far yet?
It would depend on the proposal. If they're clustered, then there's the possibility of using either the same system or expanding systems for the dwelling that's currently there, or a separate system, or separate systems for these units, depending on how it's spaced out there.
And as far as when, if somebody goes in for one of these permits, if you do like a conditional use permit, neighbors and public would have the right to basically comment on it?
Yes, it would be processed and saved as our other rental here.
So I think that'd be pretty important.
And a conditional use permit, that could be revoked in the future if there's enough dissent on it, correct? If, if they're allowed to operate and if it becomes problematic.
There is a revocation.
That'd be really important.
Yeah, I think so, too.
If they're, they have to be in violation, not just people don't like it anymore. They have to violate the terms of their use permit.
Like abusing the noise ordinance going on till midnight and things like that?
Whatever, as long, as long as that's a condition of the use permit, yeah, that would be a violation of the use permit. It could be enforced that way.
Well, that's a.
I know it's another code, but I assume it's incorporated somehow into the.
Yeah, most of the use permits for like, for any bed and breakfast or tasting rooms, there's a, if they have a use permit, there's a, almost all of them have a mandatory, so acquire time.
Land Use Committee felt it was important to have some limitations on this now to figure out if it's, it's going to work. If it doesn't work, we, we can change the resolution back to the way it was. But we thought it was a novel idea from Mr. Legu and give it a chance, and it actually might help with the lodging situation for those people that don't want to drive back and forth in the valley.
Well, I think it's, it's a great idea, especially if you start having issues where they're outside their use permits, you can bring it back, take it away. I could, I like the idea. And I saw, Richard, you had, you didn't want to extend it, maybe in the future you might, and I think I like that idea. Let's try it, see how it works on basically wineries, limited basis, and if it works good, maybe expand it out. Because it's pretty obvious, people down in the Bay Area, they want to go out and they'll pay a lot of money to go to the country.
Well, I didn't say they weren't going to pay a lot of money for this, so that's up to the proprietor.
Well, that's not, I don't think it's going to be cheap.
But I, I think we want it to take incremental steps and see if, if it works, see if it's a good idea, or see if it causes nothing but problems. I, I envision it's going to work, especially if you work with your neighbors and locate it where it's not problematic to, to them or to other people. Agreed. Other, any other comments from the board?
No.
Any public comments?
Good question. If, if and when this.
Your name, please.
Sorry. It's such a small room. It feels weird to announce yourself. If and when this is extended, because it seems to me it would be an appropriate idea also for other commercial ad operations, what would the process be for that? And what's the timeframe that you're kind of hoping to kind of step this into place?
I don't think we really have a timeline. I think we, we wait to have a couple of these go in and, and see if they work, see if they cause problems. And if everything seems like it's positive, then we, I think the board would probably look at extending it to other areas beyond wineries. I think wineries was the natural first step.
I, I just keep thinking of like the Amor Flowers on this.
And they haven't advocated for that, so I'm not sure if they want to go that way, but that's up to them in the future. Any other public comment here in the room? Any public comment on Zoom? All right, board members, back to you then. There's the resolution of intention.
No, I have one, one more question. What about roads? Looks like we're going to require a road maintenance agreement, if it's like a private road.
If it were a private road, that would probably typically be a condition of approval, because there'd be a road maintenance agreement between at least fifty-one percent of the owners or users of that road. That's the way, that's the way we do it with tasting rooms that are on a private road.
Okay. Yeah, I do like the idea. If it works out in the future, I'd like to see it expanded out to other areas.
And you, you made the comment before that something like this could actually help people that, that lives on, live on farms and ranches to get a little bit of extra income.
Oh, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's tough right now, so. So with that, resolution of intention.
I've moved a resolution of intention to amend the county's bed and breakfast end code to allow detached room units as alternative guest quarters for overnight lodging.
You can second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Most carries four zero one, and I'm not doing a roll call today because Supervisor Axe is absent, so. All right, on to five D, Social Services Department, creation of a housing services program manager position and authorization to fill the position. Ann?
Good morning. Ann Washington, Department of Social Services. As you've seen, our department over the last couple of years has received increased funding related to addressing homelessness and housing insecurity. But this is a new service realm for us, and we really don't have the infrastructure in place to meet all those program requirements. Instead, we've put the responsibilities of these programs over existing staff positions based on which population each program serves. And so what I'm asking for today is that we add a housing services program manager position in order to have a little bit more of a well-thought-out approach to centrally locate all of our housing programs in one, in one place. This position would be fully funded by the state funds that we are currently receiving from the state and would not require any county general funds. We also were hoping that this position would help us be a little bit better prepared for care court, which, we're not one of the early implementing counties of care court, but we do know that that's on its way. And there's a large housing component for our care court. And so I've been in communication with Melissa Cranfield from Behavioral Health, and we've been talking a little bit about how we can blend some of our funding and be a little bit more prepared for that care court requirement as well. As we stand today, neither of us really are in a position to, to manage the housing piece of that.
You said it will not require any additional county funding. I think you should have said at this time, because as we all know, things change and the economy could get worse. We're not going to get federal dollars forever to support things, so that's when push is going to come to shove. Is the state, is the state still going to require us in the future to do things if they pull the funding?
It's coming out of social services realignment, so the state's paying for it, not, not.
With all of this money that's, that's coming in from the different sources?
Well, it is, but they're, they're giving us money for care court. And they're getting it down our throat, and. You know, they're getting it down our throat, and, and we gotta do it, so, gotta do it.
And care court is all well and good as long as we meet the requirements and don't have a, uh, a court action taken against us, because they built that into it, that, uh, we don't comply, if we don't do what the state wants us to do, then we're subject to being taken to court and, and sued over it. And that, we fought that pretty hard at the state level. We lost that battle. But it was just a horrible precedent they're setting by, um, holding a stick over us to say if you don't, if you don't comply, we're gonna, you're gonna be taken to court. It's never happened before that I remember. And that's part of this administration and their mindset, so. Any other more board comments before we go to public? Uh, any public comment? Anyone on Zoom? We oughta have meetings up here more often.
Maybe I, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Bill. Now, can you, uh...
I'm Bill Eisenbaum.
Okay.
It sounds to me, I'm trying to, trying to learn all this, but you're saying if you take money to the state, they kinda own you. If you do something wrong, you end up in court.
They, they have the ability now with care court. Ann, can you give a little more?
Probably, Melissa probably has more knowledge about that piece of care court than I have. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I mean, I think, and just like Ann had said, we're not one of the early implementing counties, so we're really not all the way in it right now. But, um, care court is, just kind of in a nutshell, is, um, trying to keep people who are mentally ill or have substance use disorders out of jails and out of the court system and rather get them treatment. But part of this is that Behavioral Health will be responsible to provide services for them, and Social Services will be to provide services for them. Housing is a component of that. People need to be housed. And if they fail their treatment plan, whatever that looks like, then the county, they're, we could get fined, we can get sued for not having, and that these, and then the folks that are in the program, if they fail the program, they can, they would also be presumed to be needing conservatorship. So they would be conserved, and then our two departments are then responsible for their care and custody as well. So, um, the idea of providing services rather than institutionalizing folks in a jail or prison system is a good idea. The way they're going about it is gonna be really difficult for us to, to maneuver, because not everyone wants services either. So then for us to be penalized if they fail their treatment plans, it's, it's not gonna help us serve the rest of our clients that we're trying to serve, so.
Doesn't sound like a good idea to you.
We're hoping that with the early implementing counties, they'll work out all these kinks, and by the time it gets to us, things will be better, but who knows?
There may be a no good answer, Bill.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're right.
That's what I'm saying, it's a big...
We've never had an administration support the legislator being punitive towards counties. And really, it, it doesn't build a healthy relationship, uh, but they're building that in with the money now. You get the money, you're gonna do what we say, and more and more, they're moving in that direction. Really not a healthy situation. So, with that, there was no comments, uh, on Zoom, so any other comments here? None? We have an action?
Can Ann make a motion to, um, go ahead and do the budget increases and go ahead and, uh, do one additional position?
Approve adding the new housing services program management.
I'd second that.
Moved and seconded?
Not happily, but...
Well, I, I think it's a good, it'll work out well, it's a good position, but under discussion. You said there was another position under consideration then, if this is added?
Right. My, my goal would be to add a more of a case manager position after this one, but I wanted to get this established first and look at the workload, look at our outcomes, and see what our funding will look like and how we can sustain that over time. Just wanna take it one step at a time.
It sounds like this person has a pretty good, um, job description lined up of what, they've already got their responsibilities lined up, so.
It's pretty well lined up.
They better be ready to go to work, right?
That's right. It, it'll be a big job. But I think we can see that the writing's on the wall, that this housing piece is going to land under Social Services.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I, I'll oppose. Most carries four zero one. We'll go to item five E, our minutes. The only change I saw, it was in the body of the minutes, it was pointed out that Supervisor Brown was on vacation, but I, I'd like to put that behind his name where it says absent, just so it's very clear to people. Otherwise, um, people look at that down the road and say, "You missed a meeting."
I missed a meeting.
Don't know why, so.
You know, I meant to talk to Jennifer about it, but the closed sessions seem to have a conflict...
We haven't, oh, it, we...
With the regular session minutes?
And which one is right?
I'm not sure. I meant to talk to Jennifer, but I hadn't yet, so.
So, well, you wanna keep this open until...
I think I would.
Okay, let's leave the minutes for now until Supervisor Neto can talk to our board clerk or to our deputy board clerk. So with that, we have two items additional under code enforcement that are scheduled for ten thirty, so we will recess at this time and come back into session at ten thirty.
January twenty first, two five two three five two Merlin Drive Pioneer, that would be District Three, correct? Okay. All right. Michelle?
I'm gonna get my papers from the other one out of the way here. Michelle Gallagher, Code Enforcement. This case is in Amador County Department of Code versus Heather Stainer. Got the property located at two five two five two Merlin Drive Pioneer, California.
And is Ms. Stainer here? No?
No, I don't see her.
Okay.
On November twelfth, twenty twenty one, we received a complaint regarding violation of occupied trailers. Site visit was conducted and photos were taken by Code Enforcement. On December twenty first, twenty twenty one, notice of violation sent by the planning department. Violation was sent certified mail and first-class mail to property owner. January twenty first, twenty twenty two, a site visit conducted and photos were taken by Code Enforcement. Code Enforcement spoke with Heather Stainer in regards to occupied trailers, junk, and vehicle violations. One RV and one trailer were on the property. The RV was not connected to any septic. Heather stated it was her friend who was storing it up here. The electrical cord was out but not connected. The trailer that was located on the property did have a roof frame which was connected to a septic, water, and electricity batteries and solar. Heather stated it's connected to the septic. I could not confirm with all the debris and the way if it does or if it dumps on the ground. Owner gets water from well. The property is set up for living. There's a barbecue, a garden, several outbuildings made of tarps. There was an old marijuana grow there as well, small shed for well, a chicken coop with chickens and ducks roaming, and several vehicles. One vehicle was claimed inoperable and abandoned by the marijuana growers. It was a Chevy Suburban. The vehicle was tagged for abatement. Junk and hazardous waste throughout property, and I informed owner of the past Pioneer cleanup. Owner states she lives in Sacramento. She stated she comes out to the property every day to check on the chickens. She has three dogs and she doesn't want to build a house currently. Explained the progress must be made, and I exchanged contact info and emailed her the documents in regards to the NOV and the cleanup. On January twenty fifth, a notice of violation for junk was sent by the planning department, which was also sent certified mail in first class. January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, was referred to Code Enforcement. On January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, notice of proposed abatement code violations was sent to property owner via first-class mail and posted on property. Final inspection was scheduled for March sixteenth, twenty twenty two, at ten AM. On March sixteenth, some progress was made. Photos were taken. I met with Heather at the property. She had started to organize the property. The trailer was still connected. And the horn mirror had to clean up again and to take advantage to finish getting the property into compliance. Explained the trailer had to be stored and not connected. The animals should not be left there due to no one living there. It is a vacant parcel, and they're not protected by predators since basically it's open where they were roaming. Gave her info on the hazardous waste options. The property has a long way to go to be cleaned, and Heather stated she will continue to work on it. Final inspection was May eighteenth, twenty twenty two, at ten AM. On April twenty seventh, they sent her an email reminder about the dump passes for the Pioneer cleanup. On May eighteenth of the final inspection, the trailer was still open and connected. The junk was somewhat organized but still throughout the property. The RV power cord was out again and not stored. I explained the process for the hearing, that the trailer must be stored, closed, and disconnected. Occupying the trailer is not allowed, and explained the potential change in the square footage for a home and obtaining an occupied trailer while building use permit is the only option available at this time. Talked about the animals being unattended again on the vacant parcel and that the junk needs to be disposed of and stored in an enclosed area or in a designated ten-by-twenty area. And finally, all marijuana used items need to be disposed of or repurposed for another use. Tarps need to be removed, and she stated she would continue to make progress. On May thirty first, the vehicle was abated from the property, the Chevy Suburban. And then on June sixteenth, an administrative hearing was held on June twenty third at the board chambers. A notice of abatement hearing date was mailed to Heather Stainer and via email to her. As of date... At the hearing, actually, there was a continuance. It was just recently... She got a four-months continuance. It was just recently heard again by the hearing board, in which she did not show. I did not get any contact when I reached out to her about what she has done. The day of the hearing, I did get a phone call from a friend stating that that night she ended up being in the hospital. Went to the hospital, but did get confirmation the night before she was at the property quarterly having a party there. And that there possibly is another marijuana grow there as well. So we are asking that the board adopt the findings of the hearing board. The landowner shall have thirty days to voluntarily abate the notice code violations. If the landowner fails to abate the violations within the timeframe, the county staff may take all necessary actions. To abate the violations, including obtaining necessary court orders, abatement expenses shall be borne by the landowner. And the county shall recover its cost of abatement, including administrative and investigative costs and attorney fees.
Questions from the board?
Nope, it just looks like one more reason why I'm glad we didn't okay commercial marijuana grows.
Well, and that's the question. It looks like they had considerably more marijuana being grown than was allowed to be grown, so why isn't law enforcement involved?
It was the previous, before possibly it starting again, before it was handled by ACNET. It was taken out by ACNET, but of course, they take the plants, the rest of the stuff ends up staying.
So if they're starting a new grow, is ACNET informed of that?
They would be aware of that, yes. I do not want to get into anything that might be a current case or...
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Comments? Any public comments? Any Zoom comments? Or Mr. Isabard?
I have a comment. I just want to make sure I understand. So you're asking for the county to go out there and abate the property to clean up at her expense?
Correct.
Sort of.
If she doesn't comply, yes, in thirty days.
Well, there's more steps, right? So this is the board saying, owner, you have thirty days to clean up, and if you don't clean it up, the county may come do it. Right? So the board will have to at some point tell staff to go do it and pay for the... I mean, I don't know that you have money in the budget. So there's another step to actually having the county go out and abate the violations, but it's on the map.
So it's going to come down to about... It sounds like where's the money come from to do it?
Initially, from the county. The taxpayers bear the costs until we can go to recovery, which sometimes we're...
A lawsuit.
Sometimes we can recover, sometimes we can't.
It's a lien. The costs go as a lien, and they get added to the tax bill.
And this whole process has been going on for how long now? For, I mean, since you started your first visit to this lady's property?
This was back in two thousand and twenty.
November twenty twenty one.
Yeah, November twelve, twenty twenty one.
Well, we try to be fair to people. We try to give them time. We try to take their word for that they're going to comply.
I did it. I guess I just see it a little different. And it's kind of like, and I don't want to be told what to do with my property more than anybody else here. But don't let it get to that point. If it never gets to that point, it's never an issue. It's not going to cost the county money, which we don't have.
That's a hard one, though. I mean, a lot of people do a lot of stuff they shouldn't do. So you're either going to have an absolute nanny state, which we don't want, or you're going to have some of these on occasion.
You know me, Brian. I don't want that, you know? But I just, you know, people, I don't know how to go about getting folks just to take care of their stuff. It's not that big of a deal, you know? But...
You'd think it'd be easy, but it's not.
Everybody's different. And it is a big deal for some people, so... They have a determination by the hearing board and two recommendations from them for the board to adopt.
Move to approve?
So that would be a motion to approve the findings of the hearing board.
One through two.
And then number two, the landowner shall have thirty days to voluntarily abate the notice code violations. If the landowner fails to abate the violations within the time, then county staff may take all necessary actions to abate the violations, including obtaining necessary court orders. Abatement expenses shall be borne by the landowner, and the county shall recover its cost of abatement, including administrative and investigative costs and attorney fees.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Supervisor O'Neal has a second on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero one. Onto our second, Code Enforcement item six B. Discussion of possible action regarding public health and safety violation. Subject property is located at two seven zero six five Highway eighty-eight Pioneer, California. Also in District Three.
Bear with me on this one. This one's a long one. Shaw County, Georgia County Code Enforcement versus George Kleinheys. Buying the property, the OK Corral, located at two seven zero six five Highway eighty-eight Pioneer, California.
And is Mr. Kleinheys here?
He is.
Yes, okay.
On December ninth, two thousand and sixteen, Amador County Environmental Health Department issued a courtesy notice to the property owner stating the department was aware of the property purchase and notifying the owner of the apartments that must be done with the water supply and the use of the commercial business with a deadline of December thirty first, two thousand and sixteen. On January eighteen, two thousand and seventeen, Amador County Health Department issued a second courtesy notice to the property owner with a detailed overview of the twelve requirements that must be done to operate as discussed at the January eighteenth inspection. On June eighth, two thousand and seventeen, a joint inspection was done by Environmental Health, Amador Fire, and the Building Department. During the inspection, the bar and food were being served to the public. A kitchen was constructed without proper permits. A kitchen failed to meet minimum food facility standards per the California Retail Food Code. Examples of those violations were lack of handwashing and food preparation sinks and the use of porous, not easily cleaned surfaces exist beneath food prep areas. The Environmental Health Department informed the owner again to cease all operations until a food facility permit is issued. An application and plan check guidelines were provided to the owner. On June fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, Amador County Environmental Health Department issued an enforcement letter to the property owner. Five directives were given with deadlines. They are the following. Cease immediate preparation and selling of food due to no food permit. Provide documentation obtaining your C forty-eight license for the alcohol beverage control department, no alcohol permit. Submit plans to the Building Department for illegal construction applied for certificate of occupancy, the substandard building, there was a fire. Submit a routine color form sample no later than June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, no water permit. An outstanding water system condition noted in notice number two, four through seven, ten, and eleven must be completed by August first, two thousand and seventeen, again, no water permit. Failure will result in referring case to Code Enforcement. On December eighteen, two thousand and seventeen, Amador County Environmental Health Department issued a third courtesy notice to the property owner with a detailed overview of the past letter requirements that must be done to operate. On July twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, the Amador County Environmental Health Department issued a citation for operating without a domestic water supply permit. On January eleventh, twenty twenty one, a complaint was received and Environmental Health takes photos of the property. On January thirteenth, twenty twenty one, the Amador County Health Department sent via certified first-class mail a notice of violation to the property owner under the case number EH twenty-one dash one. The NOV directed him to cease business operations at the OK Corral Restaurant Bar until he obtained required food facility and water system operating permits. The Building Department also issued a notice of violation and was mailed to the property owner certified first-class mail stating the property owner needed to schedule a meeting by February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one to either remove and demolish the building by obtaining a demolition permit. On February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty one, a notice of continuance violation was sent by the Environmental Health Department to the property owner granting him until March fifteenth of two thousand and twenty one to submit necessary food facility permitting paperwork to Environmental Health and to submit an application for a domestic water supply permit to the California Division of Drinking Water. Following the February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty one, notice of continuance violation, Environmental Health was notified by the Division of Drinking Water that OK Corral was administratively reissued its domestic water supply permit in late two thousand and twenty. But this interim administrative action did not relieve the OK Corral of its water quality monitoring requirements. Furthermore, this permit was only valid until the DDW had the opportunity to review the system and formally request the water system make application for a public water system. On June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one, Environmental Health notified the Building Department that the OK Corral lacks required food facility and water system permits. On June eighteen, two thousand and twenty one, unannounced site visit to the OK Corral Bar by Environmental Health. Mr. Kleinheys was present and expressed that he only wants to operate the bar and not the restaurant. Environmental Health staff required Mr. Kleinheys to submit a food facility application for the bar. Furthermore, it was explained that no food preparation may occur without first obtaining a restaurant permit. The division has also not received the items required under the enforcement letter. The items required for the permit are considered outstanding, and the water system is noncompliant with bacteriological monitoring. On May fourth, twenty twenty-two, Environmental Health reopened the case, sent a notice of violation to the property owner. This action is being taken in parallel to the enforcement action of the California State Water Board. The, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the Water Resource Control Board, Division of Drinking Water, issued a citation to Mr. George Kleinheys for failure to conduct the water quality monitoring, failure to obtain a domestic water supply permit. On June third, twenty twenty-two, Division of Drinking Water reports that none of the directives in the two May eleventh, twenty twenty-two citations have been met. Mr. Kleinheys was notified of the compliance status via email on this date. On May thirty-first, twenty-two, and June fifth, twenty-two, on these two dates, Environmental Health had observed OK Corral still operating. On June sixth, twenty twenty-two, as of this date, George Kleinheys has failed to pay his annual operating permit fee for the OK Corral Bar. Mr. Kleinheys received the final of the three fees noticed from the department. On April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, he also failed to provide documentation that has a portable water supply. Environmental Health refers the case to code enforcement. On July first of twenty twenty-two, the Building Department sent a second notice of violation via mail, stating the property owner needed to schedule a meeting by July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, to obtain a building demolition permit. July twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two, property owner had not reached out to Building Department to obtain a permit or schedule a meeting to get this resolved. Based on what I've seen, no work had been done on this property either, so Amador County confirmed and went ahead and referred the case to Amador County Code Enforcement. On August fourth, twenty twenty-two, notice proposed abatement of code violations was sent to the property owner via request mail and was hand-delivered to Mr. Kleinheys and contact info was obtained, permits must be obtained by the September, September sixth of twenty twenty-two. On September sixth, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Kleinheys came into the Environmental Health Department and paid for the bar permit. Uh, bar permit, uh, fees were refunded due to noncompliance. In addition, the four plans and copies of occupancy permit were submitted to the Building Department, but no permit was issued for the structure. On September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Code Enforcement and Building Department extended the deadline to October fourteenth, so Mr. Kleinheys can't obtain permit for demo or remodel of motel. Code Enforcement tried phone number invited by the owner, but not worked, so left a business card on the property owner to contact me immediately. On October first, Mr. Kleinheys did not file a written appeal with Code Enforcement. On October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, an administrative abatement hea- hearing was held on October twentieth in the Board of Chambers. And the notice abatement hearing was hand-delivered and explained to the property and his business was open on that day when it was delivered. Um, I added, uh, an additional update of what's been done. So yeah, on October twenty, uh, Mr. Kleinheys did obtain a demo permit for the motel. It will be demo and finalized by November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, as agreed upon. In addition, owner stated he will get everything to the State Board for approval and then submit application with Environmental Health to apply for necessary permits. Uh, at that time, he stated he needed twenty days, uh, but we explained to him that the time he gets to here, uh, he would have that, and during that time, he needs to go ahead and close his business, uh, till further notice. And he was gonna send me a photo of that, that the business is to remain closed until he obtains all permits and they're finalized. On, uh, November first, uh, they did, uh, Robin Moreno did send me via email photos of the sign outside the property stating it was closed temp, temporary. On eleven, four, twenty-two, the Division of Drinking Water, Stockton District, had received all required items necessary to issue a domestic water supply permit to the OK Corral. Owner informed to contact EH for further directions to obtain county permits to open business. Um, I have attached the permit there that you've seen that the state had issued. Uh, Code Enforcement took pictures of the temporary sign close and progress on demo of motel. Uh, demo of motel is to be down to its foundation and must be completed by eleven twenty-one, as agreed upon. He will then submit for plans to remodel, once the demo is completed, and this will allow the normal deadlines without the Code Enforcement being a violation case. The photos were also attached to that as well. On eleven, seven, twenty-two, Code Enforcement talked with the owner, he let me know he had the state permits and wants to open his bar packed up. I informed him to contact Environmental Health by calling or coming in by tomorrow's hearing to take the necessary steps to obtain the permits. He will need to submit plans for his restaurant slash bar and pay the fees to review. He cannot open until all permits are issued by the county and he understood. Uh, for the future, uh, the owner would be required to submit quarterly reports to the state, et cetera, and we'll have EH and the State Board explain those requirements. I do have the State Board, um, on Zoom, if you have any questions and they can explain what, uh, he would need to do for the remainder of the time. Uh, what we are asking, did you wanna do the last part of it or not?
Yes, because the, because of the changed circumstances, um, what, what I would recommend is issuing the order and then immediately staying the order. Uh, and then that stay is lifted if, if the, um, owner fails to provide proof to Environmental Health's satisfaction that the permits are, are, um, being maintained for their quarterly reports. And, and also we could, that, that, it could be handled that way also with the, to ensure that the demolition permit is, is acted on and, and that he, basically, the owner complies with everything they're supposed to do for, for the year. And then that, after the year, if it's, if they've complied, then, um, the order could be void. That's one way to handle it.
The, the only part of the order, though, you wouldn't stay is the piece that they require to stay closed until they're in compliance.
Correct.
That will, that part of the order would be in effect.
Correct.
And these would be closed.
Correct.
Until they're legally allowed to open, so that would be an order that you would put into effect right now and the rest of it. The abating piece would, would be held on.
Yeah, so the, uh, one, two.
Can I ask a question on that for clarification? You, you said, Michelle, that, um, he cannot open until all permits have been issued, but really, the work would need to be done until you can open the bar and serve food, right? Because he, right now, he doesn't meet, doesn't have a food facility permit and, uh, doesn't, let's see, the kitchen, lack of hand washing and food prep sinks, and the use of porous services exists beneath food prep areas.
I, I, I can get in that by explaining, so he has an option, we're talking with Environmental Health, that, uh, he can just do a bar, if he just does the bar, then he can go there to apply for the permit, 'cause he's not gonna be serving food. So he doesn't need to get the, apply for the kitchen and the food service permit. If he decides he wants to do that, then he has to submit plans for the restaurant slash bar, uh, to get that in order to open.
Okay.
Um, from talking with him, with George right now and ask him, it sounds like in a year is when he, he obviously wants to serve food, and he's thinking like well over a year is when he's gonna do that. It sounded like he just wants to do the bar only, um.
Just until, just until I can get, do the restaurant.
So what we're, so what would stay is number one, adopt the hearing board's finding and recommendation, so we would issue an order requiring landowner to obtain a demolition permit, which he has, within the ten days, and then, within the thirty days of attending the permit, to demolish the structure in clear or solid ways. That was our November twenty-first date that we agreed on, and he's actively doing that. Um, or obtain and submit building plans to rebuild the structure, to make it legal, within the ten days. But as we discussed earlier, by demoing it, uh, that and getting it done by that deadline, it will eliminate it as a code enforcement violation. So then he can take the time to actually submit the plans and have the normal timeframe to build, uh, the motel back to what it is without having code enforcement deadlines.
I've got a question on that, the two A's for demolishing the, um, structure.
Yeah.
It's, it looks like you're making quite a bit of progress, the, um, report you sent, but the question I'd have is whether we're having, you know, maybe something might wanna hear Mr. Klein, Kleinheys, if they can still meet that timeline.
Yeah. And then, uh, number three, we would still issue an order for requiring the landowner to immediately cease commercial operations until proper water, food, and occupancy license is issued and to contact Environmental Health Department to obtain the food facility and water system operating permit. It's number four there, since he's, uh, number four, he's already submitted all the necessary documents to the State Board and stuff, so this is where we would go, where we would wanna continue a stay for a year with the order in order for him to comply with the quarterly reports to maintain that, so the permits do, uh, stay current.
Submitting to Environmental Health.
Yep.
This was way back in two seven, two thousand and seventeen, but it says provide documentation by obtaining your C forty-eight license from ABC, so that has been satisfied.
That's been satisfied, yeah.
Okay.
So the State Water Board is satisfied with all?
As of right now, yes, they received it, but he still needs to follow through with the quarterly recordings.
With, with the quarterly.
And there may be other stuff, I would have them speak to be able to say what it is, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, no, I, I would like to see, you know, staff continue working for Mr. Kleinheys, they try to get him over the bar, um. No pun intended, but, uh, no, you drive by there, seem like a, a lot of people do like going that place, so, I mean, it's, I'd say there's demand up there, these felling, so just, we try to help him, get where he needs to be, I'd like to do that. But I also understand, a lot of people don't like to see a building half burn up, you know, in their, in their community.
Well, the, the State Board will tell you this is an extreme health and public safety issue. He should not be operating at all, until he has this stuff.
Well, I heard that.
Any other board questions? Nope. Any public comment, Mr. Kleinheys, do you have any comments?
So what you're saying is when the, when, once the hotel's down, and I can get the bar permit and open the bar up again?
No, that's a separate. That's, would you mind coming up here and then stating your name and stuff?
Sure. George Eric Kleinheys with the OK Corral. So i- is that what you're saying then, or is, when the hotel's down, then I can obtain the bar permit?
So the demo, the, the demoing is a separate violation, so that's completely separate from the bar slash restaurant.
Okay.
So the demo is with the Building Department, so.
Right.
Once you, or, I guess my question is, are you able to complete that by the twenty-first?
We should, unless we're too much more slow, we should.
Perfect, okay. So, once you have that, and they go out, but you wanna call the Building Department by that date, set an inspection, they'll finalize it, that violation's now done.
Okay.
It comes off the, the order here, you satisfied that. With the bar, that's like separate, you need to go to Environmental Health, uh, if you're just gonna do the bar, you need to go talk with them on getting that permit to do so.
Okay.
Until you get that permit, you cannot open your bar.
That, that, I, no, I understand, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then we're asking that you continue to do what's necessary to keep the permits current.
Right.
With what the State Water Board needs and what Environmental Health needs.
With the testing, if, what Environmental Health needs and everything else, that, I, that's, that's.
Yes. Yes. So within that year, if you fail to do so, then this order can take effect where we can.
Gotcha.
Come at you with the, the case fees, all that kinda stuff, and any action that we may need to take and then shut you down.
Now, you had suggested, you told me yesterday to go to Environmental Health, and I did, and all I got was I don't know.
The, yeah, I apologize, that Scott, who is the person who's, has the case, is on vacation.
Okay.
Um, so they are aware of what you need to do, so I don't think there would be a problem for you to go over there after this to discuss that with them.
Okay.
As long as your intention is bar only, not food, 'cause if you do the food.
Right, and we had plans, 'cause I, we, I did the work, I submitted the plans and did all the work for the bar, and all that's been signed off and all the permit, the permits have been finalized and everything else, so, so that's all good to go, so. All I have to do then is get the bar permit, and they should know about that today then.
Okay.
Okay, good. But, but until then, I have to stay closed, so.
Correct.
No problem.
So Glenn, the action then is to issue the order and then stay the order, and anything additional?
Uh, stay the order and, um, to ensure that Environmental Health is satisfied receiving those quarterly reports, and at which time, um, after a year, the order's void.
You said Environmental Health, do they get the, the, uh, documentation from the State Water Resources Control Board, or is that a separate?
The lab sends it to both, to both places.
Yeah, I, they're, they're on there, if you wanna talk to them, they can tell you.
Well, I just wanna know, is that, should that be part of the motion?
I'm not sure how the process works, if they receive it automatically, then.
Yeah, I would have them talk, and then you'd probably get more clarification.
Hi, everyone, my name is Gina Farley, I am the staff engineer at the Division of Drinking Water. I'm assigned to regulate OK Corral. Um, unfortunately, I can only really hear anyone that is near a microphone, so if, Michelle, maybe you could repeat the question, um, I would have a better answer for you.
Sure, what does the OK Corral need to do moving forward now to satisfy your guys' requirements to keep the permit active?
Okay, so the most basic requirement, uh, is the monitoring requirement, which is taking a quarterly sample from the sink or a sink. Um, it's really simple, it's, you know, the, the minimum requirement that we have. And then, uh, having a lab, uh, analyze it for bacteria, the presence of bacteria. Normally, that area has really good groundwater, so it's typically not an issue, it just needs to be done once every three months. If it's not, um, that's when we issue a citation or other enforcement, as you see in the history that Michelle's put together. The other things would be taking a, um, annual nitrate sample from the wells, and then a nitrite sample every three years, also from the wells. Uh, again, very minimal requirements for those. And then, the other thing would just be to submit the annual report online, that we have all water systems, it's a requirement for all water systems to submit online. So those are the requirements that we have moving forward, they're very minimal, um, and I can answer any more questions on that.
Nope, questions? No, and thank you, I apologize for our circumstances today due to the election occupying our board office, Board, uh, Chambers. Any other questions? So you understand certain completely?
Yeah.
Um, so with that, in the determination by the hearing board, number four was it included necessary documents and fees and reporting to the State Water Resources Control Board. Should that be part of our action that we're adopting and staying?
I'd probably issue a bar letter to submit all necessary documents for the, you know, for the year necessarily to keep the permit current.
Yeah, so, so to move forward with the, the order as written, right?
Yeah.
And then, um, and then stay the order, and then the stay is lifted if the owner fails to comply with the water permit requirements, and that the order expires in one year, if, if compliance is reached.
More understand that?
Yeah.
Any questions, any comments, public comments? Nope, okay, then board members, I need an action. The action would be to issue the order and then stay the order. And, uh, would be lifted in one year if, uh, compliance is achieved?
Yeah, it, the order, the, uh, order expires in one year.
Expires in one year.
And it's, the stay is lifted if compliance is not achieved.
But the stay is only really for number four of the hearing board findings.
Is that, is that correct?
That would be correct, 'cause the demoing and stuff's gonna get done and, and clear that, that, we're not, we're not giving them the year to do that.
So do we need two separate motions then?
Yeah.
Number, number three, two, would need.
I think you could do it in one. Think you could?
Yep.
Well, I make a motion to adopt the hearing board's findings and recommendations. Issue the, uh, order requiring the landowner to obtain demolition permit, which has already been done, and, uh, issuing, uh, an order requiring landowner to immediately cease commercial operations, which has been done, and, uh, issue an order requiring the landowner to submit all necessary documentation fees to the State Water Source Control Board within ten days, and obtain necessary permits before submitting, for, but we're not doing food facilities. But written documentation of the State Water Control Board and testing, and stay that until for one year. The number four item.
Yes, maintain water permit in good standing, which is part of the order. The, uh, order is stayed. If, um, if owner fails to comply, then the stay is lifted, order expires in one year.
Right.
Second. Second. All right, moved and seconded, I'm not gonna repeat the. One more time. But I am gonna make the notes.
I will say, it is impressively thick.
Yeah.
What did you say, in a year, it expires if everything is achieved, if there's, if there's compliance?
If there's compliance, for one year.
He maintains the permit in good standing.
Okay. With that, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries four zero one. All right, thank you, sir, for.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll return to our minutes, and Supervisor Nettie, you had an issue?
I think we're good, no. I just had my, we're good.
We're good, okay, so, with the one change I had before by listing Supervisor Brown as, uh, vacation, can I have a motion?
Some move toward.
Who made the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, and second?
Second.
All right, uh, moved, moved and seconded to approve the minutes with just one minor correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, uh, that, uh, that ends the regular session, and the board will now go into closed session to complete that portion of our meeting. Thank you.